All right, I want to welcome everybody to the April 10th Public Safety Subcommittee Meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to thank everybody for coming. We have Commissioner Farhi, Commissioner Abel, and myself. Commissioner Booker is in attendance. We have staff, including police, public works, and engineering, and we also have our insurer here, and we appreciate him coming out for any questions we may have or any insight he can give us. So, with that being said, our agenda begins with a discussion of bridges and fees. As we're all well aware, we have an issue with the bridges under the Paoli-Thorndale line, getting hit by these trucks, mostly if not all commercial. I do know the Radnor Trail Bridge, I believe, over South Devon Ave was hit as well. So this is an issue, and it's something that's not going away and actually is getting worse. So the question is, how do we fix this? Is there signage, increased signage that we need? Do we need to increase fines for the cleanup and everything that has to go on after these bridges hit, or after these trucks hit these bridges? So with that being said, I first would ask Commissioner Farhi and then Commissioner Abel if they want to offer any thoughts on this, and then I'll turn it over to the staff.
Would it be possible to put some kind of bumper up that would extend out five, seven feet? So if they destroy it, my big concern would be if they wind up destroying it, that's fine, we can fix a bumper much more easily than we can, you know, have to have SEPTA essentially bus people from one train stop to the other while they're fixing that line.
Well, the issue is, is if you're saying about installing something, the township shouldn't be installing anything. This is an issue of PennDOT, Amtrak. These are issues that is their responsibility, there are liability issues. The minute we start to install anything in this area, we've made them aware, the commissioners have passed a resolution putting them on notice of this. The minute we start to install anything here, the liability shifts to us, which we should not be accepting those responsibilities. I think as we get further into this presentation in that, you know, we'll be asking the commissioners that, you know, we should be forwarding the invoices and that to get reimbursed because this is becoming more and more expensive to the township. We are shouldering the burden of these expenses that shouldn't be ours.
So I guess...
For these continual strikes.
So, I mean, the idea is to stop the strikes. So what has, and this is my first meeting since my appointment, so what has SEPTA, or PennDOT, or other agencies other than the township, what have they offered, if anything, or suggested?
Nothing.
Okay. So would, is it possible for us to suggest some kind of bumper?
We've made suggestions to them. We have had our state representative, Charlton, which has been very involved with this. My experience is probably one of our best state officials that I know I've worked with that's been very active. I think he's just as frustrated, too, with the lack of response.
Sure. Have we had any engineering companies come out and take a look at it?
Well, again, that's on our dime, and I don't think that it should be on our dime.
So, sure.
Unless the board decides that we're going to spend our taxpayers' dollars.
Sure. I mean, could we, what legal ramifications do we have where if we do do that, could we send them the bill?
Well, again, they haven't responded. I'm going to say, we'll start with PennDOT. We've sent invoices for repairs, for being reimbursed for patching their roads, clearing their trees, and Steve, I don't think we've received one dime from them, have we? No.
So is there any kind of legal recourse? I mean, I'm not saying we could sue them, but what...
You'll see a proposal from me later in the presentation, so...
Jake?
Yep. Bob, can you just give a, so I think we're going to talk more about the issues in Ward One. Commissioner Clark mentioned that there are a couple overpasses along the Radnor Trail, the one on South Devon, I think the one on Maplewood probably falls under this, and I think the issue mainly that I've seen is when moving trucks come through, they don't know, they don't know that they have to go around Sugar Town to come back around, you know, either to South Valley Forge Road to get back down. How many times have those bridges been hit in the past 18, 24 months?
Commissioner, our study was focused on the King of Prussia Road Bridge. However, the South Aitken Avenue Bridge, the Brookside Avenue Bridge, and the South Devon Avenue Bridge are our top contenders for bridge strikes after significantly less than the King of Prussia Road situation. So we did not focus on there. We've had one or two major incidents at Brookside. Luckily, they are few and far between. We can get you those numbers if you want those broken down.
In your, in your experience, do you think it is the moving trucks that are going through?
In the past, the moving type vehicles are the people who only operate one of those vehicles during, let's say, the summer or vacation or one single move. Definitely, we're on the highlight. What's unique about, and we'll go into the pictures, is that the King of Prussia Road, at the Amtrak underpass, it is clearly professional, commercial drivers. This is not a weekend warrior, quote unquote, that people talk about with a U-Haul. We do have those, and there are some inexperienced people, but we are having, the issue really relates, in the pictures, to commercial vehicles being operated and failure to notice multiple signs.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that information, I appreciate it. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Radnor PD, if that's all right. I know that they have a presentation, which we appreciate.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Zankowski. Highway Patrol Officer Janoski is a commercial vehicle specialist. He's certified in the state of Pennsylvania to inspect vehicles. We worked on this PowerPoint together to give a perspective to the Board of Commissioners in the community. As we know, we're talking about the King of Prussia Road, Amtrak Bridge. There's a picture of the bridge with a train going over it, there's a single, it meets a pinch point, if you will, where there's two lanes, one going each way, north and south. Specifically, we collected data from the Amtrak Police and the Radnor Police Records Management System. From 2008 to 2018, we've had over 100 truck strikes, and that's the ones that were reported. On occasion, we find some debris and never find a truck around. Damage has been caused to other vehicles and the bridge. King of Prussia Road is a state-of-Pennsylvania road, number 1038. The Amtrak Bridge is federal property, and pedestrians also cross under that bridge as well. Radnor Police have asked PennDOT and the Pennsylvania Truckers Association to help alert truckers of the situation, as safety is our top priority. Specifically, we actually asked them if they could address how GPS programs them to traverse through this area, and specifically this low bridge. These crashes occur with non-reportable crashes and reportable crashes. Reportable are the most serious. Significant property damage, vehicle being towed, and most importantly, if there was injuries. We have had some hit-and-run crashes as well, and non-reportable, or sometimes when two cars scrape a mirror, there's some damage, but it's not a disabling vehicle accident. The bridge height is clearly posted 10 foot 10. It's well in advance. We have signs all over the place. We have had a lot of teamwork from the Public Works Division, I appreciate that, remarking signs, making sure they're as bright as possible, the biggest signs we could possibly have. We've also asked PennDOT, as Mr. Zankowski called a meeting specifically, to address and review the signage there and pre-warning signage. A lot of times, when they hit this bridge, where they stop just before hitting the bridge, they turn around in the Belrose Avenue community, and that creates a lot of heartache as well with large vehicles traversing small streets. We're going to go through, this is a small digger, ended up flipping over off the back of a truck. It did strike another vehicle, almost pierced it. This is a semi that went underneath the bridge. So again, we're talking significantly sized vehicles with professional, commercial drivers. I'm going to be brief, if anybody would like to go back.
That's the bumper.
Good. Go ahead.
This, what you see here, that's, as you were saying, the bumper that's in place, that's a steel I-beam that Amtrak and SEPTA puts. So when a truck does strike the bridge, it doesn't actually strike the bridge itself. That acts as a buffer between the vehicle striking and the bridge, so the tracks don't do any shifting. And you see the truck that struck it hit it with such velocity and impacted, it twisted the beam like that. That was from a single strike. But that is in place as a bumper or a buffer to stop the vehicle from hitting the bridge.
Can I just ask a follow-up to that comment? So I guess what is the integrity, and I know that you're not PennDOT, but do we inspect the bridge for our own safety? We do have pedestrians crossing under it. Do we know about the integrity of that, of that bridge?
Commissioner Farhi, whenever a strike occurs, so oftentimes, the police will call engineering. Since it is not the township's bridge, the liability falls on Amtrak. They are always notified, and they will send somebody out to give the thumbs up that it's okay to use the bridge.
Have we suggested maybe, I'm sorry to interrupt while you're giving your presentation, have we suggested, or cameras around the bridge? I mean, that seems like that could be a fairly low-cost, you know, a low-cost solution, at least to get some of these culprits that do the, you know, these drive-bys and whatnot. I mean, it just, it seems to me that when you have commercial drivers that smash into bridges, I saw the two men in the trucks, you know, the guy was, from what I read in the report, I guess allegedly intoxicated. I mean, you can't fix, as the old saying goes, you can't fix being stupid. I mean, if these are commercial drivers and they're not going to obey signs, I don't know what else more we or anybody else can do.
One of the hazards I'd like to make the Commissioners aware of, if you look to the top of the I-beam, the yellow I-beam, and go across, you can see the metal fragment from the bottom part of the truck, but it also pierced the 13-2 electrical line. We had to call PICO out, we were unable to clean up the debris, we had to restrict pedestrian traffic until they made the line safe. And obviously, these trucks are generically either fiberglass or lightweight aluminum, and it does cause that particular problem. We have a high voltage line going underneath the train. This is one that Officer Janoski investigated. As you can see, it's another commercial vehicle where it just shattered apart. This vehicle was operated, and both parties were under the influence and had narcotics on them. Both the passenger and driver were arrested by the Radnor Police Highway Patrol Unit. As you can see, this picture also depicts, where I'm moving the mouse, significant level of scraping and interaction with the safety I-beam. The truck was obviously flipped over. A subject Subaru wagon was actually scraped by this vehicle, and somehow he made it through without being injured, an innocent passerby due to that. The people were extricated with the assistance of the Radnor Fire Company and EMS on scene. Just another picture showing the pedestrian area, which I'm moving the mouse, that is a narrow walkway that pedestrians use with the concrete barrier right here to separate them for safety. There's a couple of things for the next steps, going to turn it back to our township manager, Mr. Zankowski.
I think at this point, maybe if there's any questions that the board may have at this point for the police department, or Public Works, or Steve?
Do you know roughly how much it costs to handle this when these strikes happen? I mean, everything's different, but is there a general estimation you have, in terms of the hours you put in, and any costs that are shelled out?
We were working with Bill White specifically, who was following up with John Rice, related to how much the violation would be, and just to point out that you have the fire company and ambulance, you have police officers standing by, and you also have a lot of work by Public Works as well. The tow operators often are compensated based on their hourly rate and how long it takes to clean up the particular section. So each one is a little different, Commissioner, not trying to dodge the question, and Bill and Mr. Wright were trying to put that into perspective with the citation level. That's why we're asking about the ordinance consideration for citation.
And what did it, what's the citation level now? What kind of increase are we talking about?
Currently, we cite under the vehicle code, which is very minimal. The township really doesn't receive, receives a very minimal return on that. This ordinance would be coming back, if approved by the district justice, it would be coming back in payment directly to the township instead of the state.
Could we bill the people at fault directly?
That's what the intention of this ordinance is, is to actually bill those individuals that actually strike this bridge, to recoup the costs.
So that would be, so I'm just trying to think, logistically, that would be part of a police citation? Is that what that would be? Or that would be a separate, that'd be under the police citation, basically, and that would come to the township?
That's correct.
Okay. Jake, any questions? All right, Bob.
All right. Before we actually click on this, let me give you a little update on kind of where this is. You know, I've heard a lot of the frustrations. I know Commissioner Booker's been extremely frustrated with this, as well as I know the police department has been frustrated. We have gotten zero response from Amtrak. They've been invited to this meeting, they've been invited to the previous meetings, there's been a no-show on that. The costs continue to grow for us. Again, looking at trying to position police out there to monitor this, there would be such an expense for us to monitor how this would go. If we were to put police out there around the clock to do this, you would have people then navigating through their radio system, then through the neighborhoods, which would be a significant impact, which right now, you have truckers that are, that are off, they can't make the bridge, so they decide they're going to navigate through neighborhoods, which have now impacted, which I know Steve McNills with Public Works, we've had to do some repairs off of some of the streets there where trucks have hit stones, have run up on lawns, which have been a big problem, which again, too, that impacts our expenses, which we can't get reimbursed for. How do we manage that traffic to keep big tractor-trailers out of neighborhoods, which I know that Commissioner Booker has heard a lot of from his residents, I've heard from those. We can't, because of our staff size and police, we can't just take a lot of officers and put them up there just to manage this. This is a problem, and especially since Amtrak has made this now a major stop, without notifying the township, that this is a major stop for them. It has increased traffic into that area. This is a problem. We've gotten zero response from State Patrol, from PennDOT. So I know this is a radical suggestion, I understand that, but to get the attention, so Chris, I'll have this go on, you can go ahead and hit the next one here. My suggestion is, because you're putting people in harm's way here, someone will get killed in this area. My suggestion is that we would actually, I would look for the board to authorize to actually close that bridge down, and actually put the concrete Jersey barriers up, that we'd actually block, that there would be no traffic that would go through there. We would then block off the Amtrak parking lot areas, because we have access to the park up there, that's through our public lot that they access through. We would post signage that says that that bridge, that you cannot access through that bridge anymore. Because as the police department has noted, you've seen those accidents there, and I've heard from our police, someone is going to be killed up there one of these days because of poor driving, Sean, is what you pointed out. You can't stop stupid, and that's what happens. You have a lot of these professional, they're professional truck drivers trying to run these big trucks through there, you've seen that. We're not getting the attention through passing resolutions by the commissioners, by sending letters, sending invoices. You can see where we've gotten. My suggestion is we close this road down. I know the authority is not there for us, technically, but we can block this here, and we can block those lots. Because at some point, where does this stop? Until one of our residents are killed because of this? I mean, where does it end? I know it sounds dramatic, but when does it end? When does, when do we get bad news that, when you look at the number of bridge strikes, I mean, how much is enough? I mean, how many bridge strikes do we have, we had there on that bridge in the last six months or in the last year? The number only gets worse here, and when you look at that, how do we explain to a mother and their kids going through there, a continual? And we get zero response from PennDOT. Amtrak doesn't seem to care. You have State Patrol, nobody cares. When do we put a stop to this? When does that end? I know this is extreme, but how do we, how do we put a stop to get someone's attention?
So I love the idea that you're thinking extremely. I like the outside-of-the-box thinking. My concerns with doing something like that is, and I understand Commissioner Booker's frustration. I mean, it's, what's, you know, every other week, we haven't had one in the past couple weeks, but it's every other week, and it's terrible, it's dangerous. You know, we have two schools there. My son goes to Radnor Elementary. But if we do block it off, I look at things like, well, what happens if we do have an emergency? How does EMS get there? How do the police get there? Especially to the schools. We have two schools, Carroll, we have corporate centers, you know, and you need EMS to be able to, there's no, I mean, you know, going any other way could, if it's three, four minutes, it's an extreme amount of time in any kind of an emergency. So that is my, my big fear of doing it, but I like the idea that we, maybe to do something like that, to send the message. I don't know, is that our road to do that? Do we have the right to do that? Is that our road or state road?
Well, they haven't paid a dime to us to maintain that. We plowed that road, we patched that road, we have done tree removal from that road. We have done everything for that road. We have done enforcement on that road, traffic enforcement, they've done nothing to help with that at all. They don't reimburse us for any of the expenses on that road for all the damage that has been done. You raise a good point about emergency services that would have to get through there, we would accommodate that. But at what point, what point does someone pay attention to us here at Radnor?
You know, I mean, and again, I understand Commissioner Booker's frustration, but I think, you know, we're also, to a certain extent, cutting our nose off despite our face. It's either a couple of bad culprits, as always the case, and we have to make extreme measures, as you're saying, to try to rectify the situation. But our residents are going to have to now cut through, it's like we're saying, oh, well, they're cutting, the big trucks are cutting through the neighborhoods. Now you're going to offset the traffic pattern, I don't know, put it into freefall, so to speak. What's going to be the fallout of other neighborhoods where trucks are, they're just going to navigate? It still doesn't end the problem. My biggest concern is, we're cutting our own nose off despite our face. It's an issue with us and SEPTA, us and PennDOT, et cetera. I mean, you know, if you could close the stop down, that's something you could do until, to get their attention. But to close our access, it seems like a detriment to our residents. That's my, my concern. It's an issue with SEPTA. If it means...
Amtrak.
Amtrak, pardon, Amtrak. If it means suing them, then sue them. But I do get that what is going on is not working, and extreme measures, it's good. I just don't necessarily know if this is the best course of action.
I just want to understand it. So your proposal is to put Jersey barriers on the southern side of the Paoli-Thorndale Bridge, or the Amtrak Bridge, I should say, to shut down King of Prussia Road there, and then to put them in the Radnor Corporate Center parking lot there on the southern side of the tracks to cut off the access to where the people park for the Radnor train station?
Correct.
And then on the northern side of the tracks on King of Prussia Road to cut off southbound access right around the dentist office that's there, the family, the medical office that's there, and then set in between the tracks and Radnor Memorial Field, so the people could still use Memorial Field, the Memorial Field parking lot, but it would cut off access down to the parking on the northern side of the tracks that people use for the Radnor Station.
Correct. Because I'm going to guess that within a day, we're going to find out from PennDOT. And I don't think it's going to take very long, this road's going to be closed.
I would imagine we'd hear from a lot of people within a couple hours.
I would imagine, very quickly.
So, just one more thing, sorry to keep harping on this, but when you look at other access ways, I guess one is, what is it, County Line Road, where you could kind of skirt around it, but again, there's another underpass by the Villanova Stadium. When you, if you wanted to circumvent your way around the King of Prussia underpass, you would have to, one of the ways would be either going over the overpass by the Villanova Train Station, or if you, again, you have that issue of where you have to go down that very, very, very steep hill in Old Gulf, and what is it, Old Gulf, or Matson Ford and County Line, and that, I mean, these big trucks, I mean, it's tough to stop down there. So I just feel that we're not addressing the problem. The problem is, how do we stop? I mean, unless we dig, or we have them, you know, if we, you know, dig it out and have them put a, another type of overpass, I don't think it's a Band-Aid, it's a Band-Aid. We need to find a long-term solution. I don't think these are long-term solutions.
There, this is, this is not meant to be a long-term. This is a short-term to bring them to the table, because as part of this, there's enforcement that has to take place, because people are not going to be allowed to go through the neighborhoods to shortcut around this. So there's enforcement that's taking place, because we're not going to push people through the neighborhoods.
Sure. If we do bring them to the table, what does our long-term ask, so to speak?
They're going to have to rectify this issue here with the bridge strikes. They're going to have to put something in place that is going to, how are they going to look to prevent these strikes? What is the enforcement that they are looking to do? Because we aren't in a position that we can take this on. They've done nothing to help, help us rectify this.
It's a circular argument, but you can't fix stupid, so we're right again back to square one, unless you...
Sean, unless you're willing to, the township, the taxpayers, to fund their problem.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, it's just...
That's the issue.
It's a, it's a very hard problem with not a real clear-cut solution.
Trust me, this is not something I think is great that we, this is wonderful, but when do you bring them to the table? How do you get, because we've tried billing them, doing whatever we can, and you can see the response, we've gotten zero.
All right. Jake, any, any thoughts? All right. All right. Something to think about. I can promise we'll do that. All right. All right. Anything else on the bridges and the fees? And we do have a proposed ordinance here, and going through it, it does, the first thing I saw was the Article III on the last page, where it sets forth the $1,000 fine for any person who violates the terms of this ordinance, or who falls under it. So what it deals with is cost of these industrial accidents and whatnot. So something else that we can take a look at in the future and see if it's something the board's interested in passing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know Commissioner Abel has asked me to look at all the costs involved here. So what I will do is, I've got several of those costs together. We need to finalize the fire costs of what their expense and time is on this, and actually put a number to that, and then get the actual full numbers, all number, all-in numbers, and then put those together. Because I think this number's going to be a little light from what we, what these should be. And then if we're, there should be a penalty that's part of this, not just covering our expenses, because I don't think we want to be in the business, because if it's $1,000, someone might just say, you know what, if we make a mistake, $1,000 is, if it's $1,000. I don't think we want to be in the business of just having somebody hit it for $1,000. I mean, there's quite an expense and a lot of other time that people go into this, not just the officers on the road. There's administrative costs that go into this as well, not that we're piling on, but there are significant other costs that go into this as well. So we will, we will look at this, and I'll get this then to the board as well to look at.
Can I just ask Commissioner Booker if he has any insight? I know that you deal with a lot of the neighbors complaining, it's in your ward, you bear the brunt of it, I've read the emails, I understand your frustration. Do you have any input to help rectify the situation?
As you can see from the data presented, they have now 100 strikes recorded over the last 10 years since 2008, so 10 a year. It's, and it's been increasing, it's more than one a month, and I think that Bob is correct. It's only a matter of time till we do have a... It's only a matter of time till we do have a, a serious injury. We have, what happens most of the time is a truck driver smashes into it and then gets out of the truck and the tow trucks come. But you saw the one, the one instance where it was towing a backhoe and that backhoe flipped over. There's constantly traffic going through there. And this is, the concern is that one of these trucks is going to flip over when there's another car that's passing it. And will, and we do run the risk of having an injury. And what are we going to say when that happens? And I, I think that is inevitable. The, the numbers that we looked at on that road, there's over 15,000 cars per day in 2015 that were on, in that area. And the measuring point was at Matson Ford Road, just shortly up, up north of that. And I think it's more than that. I think it's probably 17,000 or 18,000 a day because it's increased since 2015 because of the new construction that we have at Upper Marion. So we see a lot of cars coming from Upper Marion. And these trucks, I think, are coming from Upper Marion and they're picking up the Blue Route at Radnor. And rather than travel east on the, on the Blue Route, on the Schuylkill Expressway and then pick up the Blue Route, that's a longer route, they take these shortcuts following Waze or other electronic documentation, electronic navigation systems. And that's what's causing this. But it's getting worse. And something needs to be done because Amtrak looks at it apparently like, well, that are, there is a bumper, that's the, so Luke showed a picture like, you know, here's a bumper. If you hit this, you, you know, you're going to, not going to make the bridge. We really do, in effect, have that. The bridge doesn't get hit. Amtrak's bridge doesn't get hit. The I-beam gets smashed, but the bridge stays intact and we did check that. So, and, and Amtrak is also, we met with Amtrak and representatives from SEPTA and also state and federal reps, as well as the Truckers Association. But the guy from Amtrak told me that they do not want to raise the height of the tracks in that area because you have to go a mile in either direction to raise the height. And it would be 50, 50, they looked at that, it was $50 million 10 years ago in a similar situation. Digging it out was also similar costs. Huge, huge costs to make it deeper or to raise the tracks. So we need to come up with something. Now, the only thing that we talked about, Bob, was the overheight vehicle detection system and early alert. And I guess the issue there was the maintenance of it and the, and the cost of it. So, I mean, that was the only thing that you didn't talk about, other than the new suggestion, which was to close it off.
Can I ask one more point of safety? So the pedestrian walkway, is there a fence there or is it just open? I mean, if, could you sideswipe somebody or did you hit like a rail or like a gate or whatever?
There's a rail there.
There is a rail?
Jersey barriers. There's Jersey barriers and then there's a, it's, it's not an ADA. It's a two-foot wide walk space with a Jersey barrier beside it.
Okay. So, and, and I don't know if this is, you could do this or not. I, I'm, I'm with you. I'm scared that you're going to see something tip and it's going to crush someone. You have two schools there. To me, that kind of, you have people maybe going back and forth from the restaurant to now assumed to be hotel that's there. Is it possible, and I know it would be the expense for us, but to build a flat-out wall, it only may be two feet wide, but at least there's some buffer if a truck happens to tip as opposed to just being air or some kind of open-style fence or gate? I know that we don't want to be responsible for paying for it, but I don't want to have known to have possibly done this. And, and you have a, you know, a terrible accident where you have, you know, someone getting injured or, or worse.
So Commissioner Farhi, so as unwilling as PennDOT and Amtrak are to help, we would still have to jump through all their bureaucratic hurdles to do this because it's, so SEPTA just operates the trains, it's leased to them, the trails, the tracks are leased by Amtrak. So to do what you're requesting, and I understand it, we would need a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT, and we would also need permission from Amtrak to attach to their bridge. It's been two years we've been working with Amtrak to do soil testing in the Wayne Train Station lot for a stormwater management system. I mean, it, it has creeped like a glacier. And that's for a relatively innocuous project. I, I can't imagine what would go through to, to build a wall. Although I fully see your concern for protection of the pedestrians. They won't play with us, but we will have to play in their, their court.
And, and that's, that's my whole point. I get that if you want to block off the road, that's great. But let's say SEPTA's response has been, we don't care. Again, if we block that road off, we're only hurting ourselves. They could say, great, congratulations. Now it's harder for you to go around, but, or, I mean, Amtrak, but we don't really care. So it just seems that these are great solutions, but maybe in the long-term, some kind of legal ramification may make, may make the most sense.
SEPTA, I mean, PennDOT, the commit, at the meeting Commissioner Booker was talking about, Amtrak made it very clear that their concern was their bridge, but not their job to market. PennDOT was not going to engage in the marking, even though it's their highway, but not their bridge. So there was a lot of this.
One other thing on the signs, the representative from the Pennsylvania Truckers Association said that our signs are yellow and that they should be white and black. That was the only thing. Somebody should take a look at that and the color. Because he said that that, the yellow was, is a caution. It should be white and black with a, a different color scheme to show that, that 10-10 and the low bridge.
Do we control the signs?
We, those are, those are PennDOT, so we'll pass that along to PennDOT.
That gentleman at the Truckers Association also noted that if, if they would pay for commercial GPS, it would let them know that the bridge coming up is too low. But they're using the same GPS, Google Maps that you and I might use, which is not giving bridge heights. And they're, they were trying to push that, but obviously there's a lot, a lot of truckers that aren't using that.
All right. All right. Jake, anything else?
Nope, nope. Appreciate the presentation.
One thing I would notice on this Article Three, it says $300 and then the parenthetical says $1,000. So we should have John fix that.
So I think, so I'm, I'm going to say that that does it for our discussion on bridges and fees, I guess, unless staff has anything else they want to, they want to add. But I think we all see where we're at there and more thinking to do and, and more collaboration, hopefully with these other agencies. So next on the agenda is the discussion of tree removal within the township. This became an issue recently as Commissioner Booker brought up after these winter storms, these tree branches collapsed and knocked out power to a sizable amount of residents for a prolonged period of time. And the theory is that this could have been avoided if there was proper tree care and removal. So the question is, who handles this? Is this the township? Is this PICO? Is this the homeowner? There are a lot of factors here to think about. So with that being said, Commissioner Farhi, any, anything you want to throw in there on this?
I don't have too much to say on this. I understand Commissioner Booker's wanting to, for safety. But I think that one of the great things about Radnor and one of the few areas in all of Delaware County, which Delaware County, as we all know, is extremely built up, is we do have a beautiful canopy. So safety is definitely important. No one wants anyone to get hurt. But I think protecting that canopy is, is just as important.
And I want to thank Officer Janoski. Thank you for all of your help. Deputy Flanagan, thank you. Commissioner Abel, anything on the tree removal topic?
No, is there, is there a presentation?
I, I don't believe so. I think, I think we're going to get some thoughts from Bob and, and that was going to be-
Well, the one, the one concern I, that I've, that I've heard is years ago, the township went through the right-ofways, planted trees. And I know there's several streets in, in Ward Six where the trees are now, I mean, they're gigantic. And it's no longer the township that is taking care of those trees, it's the, the residents. Is that the case?
All the trees in the right-ofway are the township's responsibility. So there are, if there's areas where there are concerns-
We have storms that go through and, I mean, these trees all the time are letting big branches go in yards and on the street.
They're all ours now. Anything in the right, in the right-ofway on tree lawns and that, those are ours.
Okay, so we can get with-
Absolutely.
The administration and talk about-
Get with Steve McNills and we'll take care of those.
All right, thank you.
So can we, so it sounds like we can go through and prune these and do whatever we need to do as we see fit. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. One of the concerns are, and we've talked about this for a long time, is it is very expensive and it will cost millions for us to be able to do this. That is something that we will talk about in the budget process. And that's something we'd like to start that conversation this summer about preparing for that with the tree maintenance. And that'll be something we'll bring John Hoss back in to talk about. And I know Commissioner Booker's, his, what he had raised, we're working on that and we'll bring that to, back to the board in coming meetings here to discuss. The topic we wanted to discuss tonight and just make to your attention is, there are a number of trees that have come down in our creeks and in those areas that will pose a problem for us with flooding issues. That is something that we wanted to at least make the board aware of that this is something that is a concern of ours that are, is going to need to be addressed as we start these spring rains that a lot of trees have come down now that are in our creeks, streams that I believe that will block a lot of our drainage areas that we're going to need to get into. This is something that we'd like the board to consider as possibly under our stormwater fund to go in and be able to clean some of these areas out. This is an issue throughout the entire township. It's not specific to certain areas or certain wards. I think this is throughout all areas of the township that we have had a lot of trees come down, a lot of uprooted trees that we need to get into. So this is something we at least want to bring to this board's attention here. I think this is going to be a safety issue and concern. As you're driving around, take a look in these areas. You'll see a lot of trees that have come down and have fallen that I think we're, it's beyond Public Works area and their expertise to be able to get into these areas. You're going to have to get track loaders into these areas to be able to cut and then pull these, pull these out. So this is something to be able to bring to the board's attention. So I don't know if Steve and Steve, if you guys want to speak to this.
So we, we have, historically, if there's something, you know, that we've been made aware of, we would address this. But I think what the manager was speaking to is there's trees down through these creeks and streams that we aren't even aware of and access is not easy whatsoever. And if somebody doesn't call and let us know, like a, a property owner who lives right there, when these spring rains come and the summer thunderstorms, it, it could be problematic for those residents or our streets or whatever. But they're, they're there, make no doubt.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like that may be a more pressing issue in the short term, given where we are in the season.
So this is something that we'd like to bring to the board, to the full board for discussion and conversation, as well as we have issues with the utility companies as well. We have a lot of trees tangled in the wires. I think this is going to be a, a bigger issue too, that we're going to need to, I think, invite the utilities to come in. There are, I think, in every ward, if you drive by now, I think they've become more obvious now because the leaf, they haven't leafed out yet, of how many trees are actually within the wires. It would be nice to get an update from PICO of where they are with stringing new wires within the township. I know they have strung quite a few new lines within the township that, with their new wires that are supposed to be resistant to trees, branches coming down hitting them where they are more resistant to bouncing off of those and they don't break as much. But there's a number, several pockets within the township that need to have new wires strung through there. I also think this committee would be a suggestion to you to actually invite Verizon and Comcast to come in. We have so many wires that are hanging now within the township that they have become a safety issue. It's, it's out of control, basically. I know Jake, this is a big issue of yours. But if you, you see these now, and especially the issue with the wires hanging through them without leafed out yet, of how many that are hanging now, they're sagging a lot. And now we've got to where PICO comes down, they take these, stringing their new lines, they will actually cut the pole and now leave whatever the utility, Comcast or Verizon, they are leaving that part of the pole suspended in the, in the air. And actually, if you, when you leave the building, check it out on Ivan Avenue here, you'll see one of those now where they're suspended. But it seems to be their new policy of leaving the pole suspended with just the cable lines hanging now. Which again, I think that's a problem and looks bad as well.
Yeah, and, and that's also, do we know where Verizon and Comcast are on moving the telecommunications lines? Because my understanding was that's what we're waiting on at this point, right? Onto those taller poles?
They tell us, so we call on this all the time, Commissioner. And what we're told is it's the last man off the line who has to remove that stub. So it seems like it's always Verizon who's the last person off the line. I've had conversations with them on South Ivan Avenue two years ago and they, it was Thanksgiving and they promised by Christmas, it was March when they actually did it. So when you see a string of new poles go up, PICO transfers their wires, whoever else does, and their, I guess their interutility agreement is whoever does it last pulls the, pulls the stub. And it just seems it takes forever for Verizon to address this. And PICO says, hey, we, we can't touch it because Verizon's got to do it. It's another, again, we get this.
I've asked the solicitor that if we could actually adopt or pass an ordinance where we would require Verizon and Comcast to pay five cents per foot of wire within the township as a maintenance fee for us to be able to maintain that. He said there might be an issue with the PUC. But I said it'd be interesting to be challenged to that because who, who's maintaining these? Because we have called on several of these and they're still hanging. But you don't know if they're live or not, if they're power or not. Especially, I know Jake, you've had some in the parks where they have, they have hung. We don't know if kids are. Commissioner Booker had one of his streets in his neighborhood, we had a problem with trying to clear that because it was tangled in trees. But actually, it was a, was it Comcast, a Verizon line or Comcast? Where eventually there was a street that was blocked where actually we just got in there and just moved it to clear it because we found out late that it was not a power line. So you have, how long does it take to get these responses? And these are problems and they're becoming more and more problematic, especially in these storms and the follow-up with maintenance, to get those carriers out to help respond with that. And, you know, PICO's getting better. But again, we have a lot of lines in several wards that need to be replaced. And where are we at on those schedules for line, pole replacement, line replacement? Where you have these constant outages and good conditions, so.
To add to the manager, so when he talked about bringing PICO in here, when PICO does line clearing and trims their trees, we had the arborist go look at it on Bryn Mawr Avenue. And as ugly as a job as it was, our arborist said they followed PUC standards correctly. But they are not following arboricultural standards. So they're, they're making the trees, the lines safe from a PUC standard, but we're left with trees that are damaged. So the conversation, the manager was talking about maybe bringing PICO in. We should also address, so when, when you see a skeleton of a tree that's left around the wire, you know, is it best at that time to remove the tree instead of having that? And avoid having that, what is a damaged tree in a couple of years in decline, fall on those wires? So we, we encounter this all the time. Aside from being unsightly, it's not leaving a good tree stock.
And Steve hits, hits the point strongly is that because that tree's in the right-ofway, that's our expense now to remove that tree. So when they took care of that, it should have been removed at their time. Now that falls on our responsibility and that's now our cost. All we have on that.
All right. So just to circle back on it, it sounds like it's, it's, it's a budget item, a budget discussion long-term. The 2019 budget will put some money in or look for some money to put in dedicated to that. And in the short-term, we need to maybe address or, or long-term address in the- And then we need to reach out to the telecommunications companies to get them to address these poles that are left over. All right. Jake, anything else?
Yeah, a couple of questions on tree cleaning. Historically, did Radnor Township have its own tree service, I mean, tree team as part of Public Works?
Many years ago, we had a climber, we still have a chip, two chippers, but we don't have a climber anymore. We don't have a dedicated tree man.
And what do we pay per year to outsource? So I know in the storm, Bob, you know, we had people out in, on South Devon and Morningside, and they were taking trees down. I mean, how much do we pay per year to outsource that service?
We could get that number for you, but by comparison, if we had that one person that was a climber, there's no way we could take down the volume of trees that we do with an outsourced company.
Years ago, Commissioner, we priced getting a bucket truck and a whole crew, and it, you know, the, the cost for the personnel was high, you know, when you factor in all the benefits, the training to be in a 60-foot bucket truck, and as the manager said, that might be fine for some general maintenance, but no way in a big storm response could we handle that. I think one of our neighboring townships has three tree crews to handle these things. Lower Marion, I'm not even going to guess at what they have, but I'm sure it's a lot more than we do. So what you have is a Parks Department that has some folks that do tree work. That's our tree group.
And not, not to, just to add on to Steve, and I don't want to pile on that neighboring community, but I would say that our, we opened up roads, our roads were open, while they had another week when their roads were still closed because the trees were down in the road. So the idea is to not have, you know, with the staff, with all the benefits and that, and how slow that goes to get the contractor in, get roads open, and just keep moving. So that's where that difference was.
Okay. Sean, anything else?
No, it sounds like something the new CarFAC could look at, whether to outsource, or hopefully, we could do it in-house.
All right. All right, so I guess that concludes that topic at this point. I guess we'll open it up to all the residents that attended, so I don't know if we, if we have anything from our one public participant over here.
I would ask what the kind of budget number we need for the right-ofways. At our meeting, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about trying to do some catch-up work with the township for tree removal in the right-ofway. And again, the issue with the removal in the right-ofway is to stop the power outages, or to, to reduce the number of outages, that it seems excessive in, in some of the old growth areas. And I know, in my area especially, we have a lot of problems with that. And I have talked with Mr. McBride and Joe Blackburn at PICO, and PICO will tell me, just told me, hey, we'll, we want to cut the trees, but your residents don't want us to cut the trees, right? And I, and I'm like, well, I guess that's probably true, but when we do have outages, I've asked them, well, what's the outage cause? And they've given me reports, and they almost always say vegetation, trees, right? Now, it's severe weather taking out trees, which knocks out the power. So Bob alluded to, well, we, if we start trying to catch up in the right-ofways, we have a pretty big number that we need to put into the budget. Do you have any kind of thoughts or update on what kind of number that we need to actually start clearing out the right-ofways, and not just trimming by PUC standards around the wires, but actually removing trees that are problematic?
I think in the conversation I had with John Hosbeck, I think if we started at $3 million per year for the next 10 years, I think that would catch us, start to catch us up.
And that's outsourcing it, right?
Exactly.
So trees and sewers seem to be our big, long-term things. That's a big budget item, right? Because it's, that's 8% of the budget.
Well, we, we, and the sewers, we committed to it to a certain extent with raising the fees, so we're going to, we're going to handle that, and we're going to have to make the same commitment to these trees.
And, and I know one of the things, and maybe I've misspoken, so I apologize to the board, but I know people have talked about removing vines from trees in parks. And I've spoken, I said, that's, doesn't even fall on the priority list, because you've got so many trees in the right-ofway, and trees that are within wires and that, and when you look at those compared to vines and the trees and the parks, that it's, there's so many that, just drive in the streets and see what we've got, and what these guys have to deal with, and what all of you have to deal with when power goes out, and trees and wires, and when they go down, you know, the, restoring that power and service back to residents, that seems to be what would fall on the high priority list.
How much of the stormwater, you think, those, we could only use it for what's in the creeks, but can we do a radius of around, if it's near a creek, I don't like Gulf Creek Road?
You, you wouldn't want to push, you're going to, what's, what's within there, what's in stormwater, you'd have to look at what exactly falls within that area, but you also have a lot of projects coming your way, too, as well with stormwater projects. So you've got quite a few of those. And then you've got sanitary sewer projects, so you've got quite a, quite a bit on your plate.
Thanks, Bob. And Sean, you had a, you have another question?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions in regards to the Villanova NCAA championship. I'm just curious what the, if we have a number of what the total expenditure was on our part, if we have a breakdown of that. I did speak with you privately, I guess in the beginning of April, and you said that Villanova does pay, which is great. Is there a timeframe of when they pay for it? And then what are the costs that, you know, that they don't, so let's say they pay for labor, but they don't pay for the gas that we put in our police cars? So is there any kind of breakdown of what they pay for, what, do we have an estimate of what the total thing, the total entity cost, yet what they will pay, and then what may be hidden or not necessarily easy as, oh, we have a policeman, we pay him X, it was, you know, five hours, so we, X times five is what? So I guess my question is, what is the total cost, and can we get a breakdown?
We will, we're working on that now, but everybody who worked for the township was required to sign in, that's from every Public Works person, from every staff person, signed in. So that will be documented, and those rates of what those people were paid for those at that time will all be calculated together, that invoice will be put together with those costs, it'll be sent to Villanova, and they reimburse 100% of the cost. We also, too, put together the expenses, because we're in charge then of all the documentation for the State Patrol, and then all the other expenses of that operation. So we put the full accounting together, and then that is sent across, and then that's where that full reimbursement, so...
So does something like gas use, I'm just throwing something out there, or wear and tear, I mean, do you, you know, on a car, or?
No, there's no, like, depreciation on a vehicle.
So it's only, so it's just straight labor?
Correct.
There's nothing else?
Unless there was something that was damaged...
Okay.
That they would reimburse that, so if there was like a sign that was damaged, they would reimburse on that. Villanova's been very good with, with that, paying that, and that's not one that takes a great deal of time for turnaround on that either.
So, so Bob, I was out till 2:30 in the morning, and I signed in, so can I expect...
I think based on your hourly rate of what you put in and what you're paid, I would imagine a few pennies, probably what, five cents or something, based on what commissioners are paid.
No, I think, I think the invaluable cost there is the experience that all the officers received, working together, coordinating with the other units, I mean, that's de-measurable.
Absolutely, and as you saw firsthand, you can't put a tabletop exercise together like that, so when there is an emergency, that coordination operation, I appreciate you spending the time out there to see what took place.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate the Police Department allowing me to join them.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
Jake, anything else?
I'm good.
Staff? All good? All right, well, thank you, everybody, for coming, we appreciate all the info, it's helpful, and we'll keep the conversation going. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. We're adjourned.